Okay, welcome everyone. This is Mayor Commission Work Session. It is March 18th and the Monday after St. Patrick's Day. And we're all doing fine. It's about 10 o'clock, although our clock says 9 o'clock. It's really 10 o'clock. And I think since the first item is Commissioner Lambert's item, maybe we'll keep that and go first to the number two, the Police Annual Report. Is that okay with you, Chief?
Yes. Good morning. Chief Sarah Mooney with the Police Department. I also wanted to introduce, I brought my three Assistant Chiefs in today because they're all part of this whole game plan and annual report that we do. So Tamika West is in the back, Tony Kalil, and Tony Spitera. This is going to be a general overview of our annual report that was already presented in hard copy to all the Commissioners and the Mayor and the City Administrators. So just an opportunity to have some questions and answers if you have any questions on anything or anything came up after the fact when you had the chance to read through it. To start off, basically, our mission aligns with the city's mission and we are basically here to provide a safe place to live, work, and visit. That's our primary goal at the Police Department. Our values have been set with a little an acronym of PRIDE. So we respect our professionalism, respect integrity, dedication, and excellence to everything that we do at the Police Department. And then our vision also aligns with the city's vision in that we want the department to be the premier law enforcement agency in Florida and we strive to attain the highest level of safety for the citizens who live, work, and play in West Palm. Summary of our services, basically, the Police Department is broken down into three divisions and the three Assistant Chiefs that are here today are the ones that are running each of these divisions. Our Support Services Bureau is run by Tony Spitera. It basically does all the administrative work for the Police Department in addition to monitoring our internal affairs unit with our professional standards. He helps with our hiring and retention, training, anything that has to do with the policies and procedures, and anything administrative with the agency that helps run the other two divisions. Our Investigative Services Bureau is run by Assistant Chief Tony Kalil. Basically, he's in charge of cases after they've been handled at the road level. Or we've had input from a citizen that maybe calls in and makes a report. All of the follow-up comes through our Criminal Investigations Division. And that includes crimes and narcotics cases and/or complaints of narcotics cases. Part of the Investigative Bureau is also our Real-Time Crime Center. That's where that falls in order to be able to pull all the information together and disseminate it out to the streets so that we can be a little bit more effective in how we patrol, being proactive and reactive to some of the information that comes into the Real-Time Crime Center. And then finally, the meat and potatoes of the agency is our field operations. Basically, that's everybody that's in a uniform, whether it's our Community Response Team, our Patrol Units, our Traffic Units, any of the specialized units that you see out and about on a daily basis. That's our largest of the divisions. There's approximately 100 positions there at the sworn level, not necessarily counting the supervisors, but the officers themselves. Any questions on how the divisions are split up? Okay. This is an organizational chart that kind of gives you a little snapshot of it. I meant to say, I do have some extra copies of the PowerPoint. If anybody wants it, they're sitting on the corner right next to the Mayor. Everybody else should have one that's at the table. If you can't see this, it's kind of hard to see it. Overall, our full capacity of employees is 404 positions. Some of those are part-time positions, so our half-bodies count as a full body when we have even numbers of those. So 404 total. 294 makes up the sworn capacity of the agency. Our Dispatch Operations is the next largest portion of the agency. There's 47 slots there. They incorporate four different shifts also, just like the Patrol Division does. Our Community Service Aides are basically assistants out in the field that help with traffic crash, minor traffic crashes and minor criminal activity in regard to reporting. They can do delayed reporting on the phone. Sometimes we will pull them in during the week if we get a backlog of calls for service that don't require a police officer to physically go to a location. If we can take the information on the phone, we try to do that and it kind of shortens our response time by allowing them to do it over the phone. Our Crime Scene Personnel, very important part of the agency. That falls under our Investigative Bureau. Their 24/7 operation also, they're attached to different schedules where they're responding to the field and also doing follow-up work in our lab at the Police Department. And then the 44 Support Civilians are distributed throughout the three different sections. There's some in Support Services, there's some that are in Investigations, and there's some that are in our Field Operations. So 44 employees and that includes our Records Division, our Administrative Staff, and Support Staff in our Hiring and Retention area. So they help with our HR issues, too. Our strategic priorities for this year are the same as they were last year. The three main things that our department is focused on is, number one, our homicides and violent crime rate. I'm going to show you some of the stats, at least our projected UCR codes for last year is going to be in the next slide. But the homicides and violent crime rate had a slight uptick last year, but it's still very concentrated in the same areas as it has been historically. With the use of the Real-Time Crime Center, we've been able to kind of narrow down the areas a little bit more specifically and been able to be proactive in our enforcement efforts in those locations, trying to actually prevent some of the things from happening. We recovered about 400 guns off the street last year as a result of some of the investigations that we were able to do in those areas where we know that we've had historic crime rates high. Burglaries is another priority for us. We actually get more complaints on burglaries than we would on the violent crime because that tends to hit people a little closer to home. You know, somebody breaks into your home or breaks into your car, they feel very violated. Fortunately, our burglary rate has gone down significantly over the past two years. You'll see that in the numbers in a few minutes. We had a few initiatives last year that contributed to that, and we're going to continue those this year, and I'll speak on those in a few minutes. And then finally, traffic crashes. With the building that's going on in the city, the people that are visiting the city, traffic has gotten a lot more congested. You've got a lot of people that are driving distracted. We're working with legislation, trying to work on the texting laws through our Chiefs' Association and that kind of effort to be able to try to mitigate some of the crashes. But we're also working with Vision Zero, which is the overall city initiative to reduce fatalities or try to eliminate them in regard to traffic crashes. So this is our Uniform Crime Report. This basically outlines the reported numbers from last year regarding our overall crime rate. This won't be official until it gets put out by the national and state-level report collectors, but the numbers on the right-hand side, if you look at that, is what our overall rate was last year. So there was a slight uptick in our violent crimes. Like I said, we have narrowed it down that it's in very specific areas, so we're able to come up with game plans for that. Yes, sir?
Yeah. Can you change?
Thank you, Chief. A quick question on the violent crimes, and the focus is often on murders, but I see that rapes are also up 16.7. Is that?
There, I have that as a note to talk about. The highest increases were with our aggravated assaults in our rape cases. So those are two of the most difficult things to prevent because a lot of times the people that are involved in those types of crimes know each other. The rape cases are not what you would necessarily define as a rape in a general mind. They are sexual assault allegations. A lot of them are like date rape-type things. If they get reported as such, we count it as such. We don't really reduce those down. We actually did a dive into the statistics from last year. I think that the reporting mechanism's in place now and statutorily, how you have to report that, has caused some of that. But also, people are more comfortable coming forward if they feel that they've been violated and obviously, we want to investigate that if there is a crime that was committed. So it's not like we're seeing, it's not like you're seeing a serial rapist out there and that's where the numbers are coming from. It's people that know each other a lot of times or have met and have a familiarity.
That's not necessarily random.
No, not at all. Not at all. So that's, but the aggravated assault numbers also that are up high, that could be a fight on the side of the road. It could be somebody pulling a gun on somebody. It's not necessarily somebody getting injured, but a threat of the injury. And a lot of times, those crimes, either we're making arrests on those because the people know each other, a lot of times it's mutual combatants, so those numbers are up. I can tell you, I took a look at the numbers for the first quarter of this year so far, and our aggravated assaults are way down. So I'm not sure why they spiked last year, but they kind of threw our numbers out of whack. Our property crimes, again, went way down last year. They went down 19% overall. So our total crime rate last year went down 16, almost 16 and 1/2%, which is good. We're still on a downward trend, but it balances out between our violent crimes and our property crimes.
Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the statistics, and I think those really show where we are. I'd be interested to know if you do know, I'd imagine there was an increase in population between 2017 and 2018, so when we're looking at percentages, that's kind of a story that's not told between the lines there.
On my last slide, I have the difference in the population as per reported through the Mayor's Office. So I'll show you that and where the demographics have kind of switched a little bit, overall numbers and that kind of thing.
Thanks.
So yes, more people, more activity. It's inevitable. Any questions on the crime rates? Okay. Our third initiative there that we're going to work on is our traffic, and like I said before, is Vision Zero is something that we're working citywide with the engineering and education part of this in addition to enforcement. We've put a couple of different speed signs up in different locations according to neighborhood requests. We've gotten more requests as a result of the ones that we put up, so we're trying to put a game plan together so that we can kind of spread out all of our initiatives in regard to traffic enforcement. As you can see-
Sir, I'm really pleased that we have put up a whole bunch of no turn on red, no right turn on red signs. I've also noticed that nobody's obeying them.
Right. And that's part of it. The Vision Zero, the whole part of that has to do with the engineering first and then education about the laws themselves. And a lot of the education part has more to do with, like I said a little bit earlier, that texting and driving and just not paying attention to what's going on. And then the final part would be enforcement. Our Traffic Division right now is not as robust as we would like it to be manpower-wise. We're getting closer and we would like to expand it, especially with the initiatives through Vision Zero. So hopefully, we can take a little bit bigger bite out of the enforcement section.
You know, when people ask about traffic, you know, about traffic enforcement, you know, we get those monthly reports at the Mayor's Meeting, and if you look at the page with citations on, I mean, it's packed with citations. And those are mainly traffic citations, right?
Right.
So it's not like you're not doing any.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, for every citation that we write, we probably pull five or six traffic stops because not everybody's getting a ticket because there's different areas you go. Tickets are expensive.
When you look at those monthly numbers, and the map is packed with little citation marks all over it.
Right. So we're working on it. That's part of our initiatives for this year again. As you see, the traffic crashes, we average about 500 a month, which is just crazy.
Whoa.
That's not necessarily all injury crashes, but that's just, you know, fender benders, taking right turns in front of people, pulling out when you shouldn't, and that kind of thing. So that takes a lot of manpower hours to handle crash reports. So that, it's pretty consistent, but we're down almost 2% from last year. Community outreach is a humongous part of our game plan. This is a list of just some of the projects that we are involved in or the programs we're involved in. Most of these are self-initiated by the officers. They come up with an idea that they want to get out into the communities and they come up with these ideas to make better relationships out in the community. The Cops and Scholars Program is something where we have community members actually identify kids that are doing good. They don't necessarily have to be straight-A students. They don't have to necessarily be, you know, the cream of the crop in everything that they do, but they're trying. They're going to school. They're showing improvement. They're trying to be engaged in making themselves better. So the officers reward them in partnership with some of our local businesses who host dinners. So once a week, we have two or three kids that go out to dinner at different restaurants with a couple of police officers. It's very low-key. They have great conversation. We're just now starting to get a little bit more feedback. We're trying to do a little bit more regimented feedback so that we can figure out how we can do it better, what can the officers do outside of the dinners even, just to help make a stronger impact in the kids' lives. That program has been recognized nationally, actually, and we have some of the officers that are involved in it. They actually were our juvenile officers who were arresting these kids. And what they did is they noticed that as they were going to do home visits on some of the other programs, which would be our RIP program, and then also through our Neighborhood Accountability Board, when a kid was getting in trouble, we were reaching out after the fact. But as these officers were doing home visits, they noticed that the families needed more help, and inevitably, there was a kid sitting in the corner doing their homework, doing exactly what they were supposed to do, and we were putting all our resources into the kid that was getting in trouble. So the officers came up with the idea, why don't we reward these kids that are doing the right thing so that we can keep them going in the right direction? And that's where that came from. So that's worked out very well. We have programs probably at about every age that you can think of, from our little Cub Scouts that we started over at the Salvation Army. They're in the third year there. We partnered with the Fire Department to start that program, and they're having a great time there. The kids were, I think, like six when they started, so they're eight, nine now, and it's still the same group of kids going through it. So that's an opportunity for them to do scouting. We recently got a party trailer, which is, basically, it's a big snow cone hot dog machine vending thing, like you'd see out at Sunfest where you go to get your sodas. So it's a mobile trailer. We take it into the community. Our Police Foundation funded that through a grant. They also, they fund the products that are coming out of that. So so far, we've gone to a couple of different parks and just to do outreach, give snow cones and hot dogs to the kids, and have the cops go out and talk with them and just kind of hang out in the neighborhoods and just to be present. So that's been something fun that's new. All the other programs are, unless I could go on and on, this is not inclusive, but it pretty much hits most of the programs that we're involved in that are outside of the normal realm of patrolling. Projects and initiatives last year, our Real-Time Crime Center, as you all know, because you funded it for us, that's really geared towards impacting our three strategic priorities, especially our homicides and violent crimes. We did some equipment upgrades last year. Some of that had to do with the Great Places to Work Survey feedback that we got, that we were able to really improve our computer systems that, thank you to IT. Our whole department has new computers, especially the guys in the field. They were having a whole lot of problems. You know, imagine going to work and you don't have a computer. Well, they do all their reports on computers, so if their computer's not working, they're not being as efficient as they could be in the field. So that was huge. A lot less downtime because we have new equipment. Some other things that we did, we adjusted uniforms a little bit at the officers' request. We have outer vest carriers now, so in the summertime when it's 900 degrees, they can kind of open up their vests a little bit and get some air in there so they're not dropping dead from the heat. And that was through their request, getting feedback from them as to how we can make things a little bit better. This year, Palm Beach County Schools requested assistance at some of their elementary schools in order to do security. So we have taken on five schools this whole year. Every day, we've had a police officer in five different schools. I was speaking with the Chief of the School Board just last week. Sounds like they're getting closer to at least covering the schools that are allocated to them now, but they just were told they got to pick up the charter schools, too. So I'm not sure if that initiative's going to go into next year or not. But that's funded through the School Board, but it takes some of our manpower. It's pretty manpower-intensive because it's five officers, five days a week for eight hours a day. So that's over and beyond your regular duty. Vision Zero, we already spoke about. We're working in conjunction with Tara, who's running that. Our Traffic Division is very strongly involved in that. One of the things that, we just got a $40,000 grant that's going to, it goes over about a six-week, seven-week period. It started already, so be careful. Out there, they're doing targeted enforcement pedestrian bicycle-type violations primarily in the Broadway Corridor and out Palm Beach Lakes, the areas where we have the highest number of concentration of crashes involving pedestrians. And then finally, the Smart Water CSI. That was an initiative we brought in for the burglaries. Basically, it's a little liquid that you put a dot to identify your valuables in your house. You register that with the company. If your property gets stolen and you run a light, a blue light over that, say it's in a pawn shop, our officers will actually go out to the pawn shops and run the lights over things. And if they get the number to pop up, you can actually identify that property as the person who had it registered from the get-go. So that was something that was really good. We put about 300 different kits out into the community. We did community meetings in the north, south, east, and west and gave that out to the citizens. We funded that with forfeiture money. Been very productive. You might see some Smart Water signs out in the neighborhoods that says this area protected by Smart Water. So it's kind of a, it's a prevention thing by looking at it, but it's also potential to be able to recover property that you may not have been able to get out otherwise. 2019, we have some projects that are planned and underway already. Expansion of the city camera system. We're working with the other departments in regard to where those are going to go, what it's going to look like, and that's going to feed into our Real-Time Crime Center, so it gives us more opportunity to do follow-up and real-time work. I believe that we're looking at the waterfront in the downtown areas, the next area that's going to be targeted for the cameras, but the infrastructure and all those technical questions have to be asked by our IT people or answered by our IT people before that gets up and running. We have been part of the Homelessness Task Force on the front end, working with Armando to be a part of that conversation. We have officers that are specifically assigned to work on homelessness issues and liaison with other social service providers to not only do enforcement and make arrests when we can, but to help hook people up with services so that we can get them out of the locations that they're in now and get them into supportive housing and/or services elsewhere. Recap is a new program that we're working on that has to do with community involvement. We've had several meetings with community members. Basically, it's a response team that will come out to scenes of whether it's violent crime or a shooting or homicide. If we have a need in the community for community support for victims and/or their families, this group comes out. The police help, but we're not the ones that are doing the outreach with the families. We're providing the training and the structure for the program, but the idea is the community members to come together to address the issues that are in their own community. So this wouldn't be, this would be, this would involve people that live in a community where they have issues, getting involved and trying to come up with the answers as to how do we address this after the fact. One of our key players in that is the MAMA organization, is Mothers Against Murderers. A lot of people there have experiences where things could have been handled better, so they're giving us input also so that we have a better response. And some of the things that some of those mothers would have liked to had when their significant other or their kid was murdered, we're trying to give that support so that somebody else doesn't have to go through the same things they did. And they're instrumental in helping us try to form that program. So that's a program out of Las Vegas. I have officers, Sergeant Graves, Lieutenant Bullard, actually, Chief West has been instrumental in that also, so they're still in the formative stages of that, but we're about a month away from having some trainers come in to actually get our citizens some training on doing the outreach, and then we'll be up and running. Hopefully, we'll have it full bore by the end of the year. And then finally, an Employee Wellness Program. One of the, one of the big hits on police officers sometimes is the fact that we're out there taking care of everybody else that we sometimes forget to take care of ourselves. We have a lieutenant who recently completed a chaplaincy program. He has stepped up to try to help form this group. It's going to be a peer specialist group within the Police Department to facilitate getting assistance to officers if they need it, or anybody that works in the department if they need it. We're working in conjunction with HR and our EAP program and some of the different counseling options that are available for any number of different things. So it's just to give our officers another outreach effort, or I mean, a resource in order to take care of themselves. Because if they're not, if they're not well, they can't go out and do their jobs effectively. So that's another program for this year. We've been working a lot with the Fire Department. Our Unified Command is something that's become more and more important as you see mass casualty-type things happening. Most of the events that we go to, if it's something that's really bad, the Fire Department's going to be involved in it, too. So we've been doing a lot more joint training with them. We've worked with the Legislature also to get some funding to get us some new equipment that's going to be used between the Fire Department and the Police Department. We recently took delivery on a new boat, so we're going to have a patrol boat that will be available to be out during our special events and that type of thing on the intercoastal. It'll be used during presidential visits, in any large-scale event that we have out on the water, in addition to ultimately, hopefully, we'll have it in the water as a patrol option. Because there's a lot that goes on in the water that you don't realize, so it's just an opportunity to be out there and be visible a little bit more.
And, you know, I'd just like to add, our state representatives have been incredibly helpful in getting us the appropriations for some of these, you know, these special equipments, and our lobbyists have been great. And we've really been able to get money for boat, and we asked for, was it the Unified Command did we do this year or the Mass Casualty?
Yeah, the Mass Casualty Response Trailer, that's on the way. We haven't taken delivery of it yet.
So we got those, too, and the Unified Command we're requesting this year.
Right. The Mass Casualty Response Trailer is basically a big supply trailer that if we had a big incident with a lot of victims, you bring that trailer to the scene and you're handing out first aid equipment to the first responders to go into the field and have everything that you need right there to do triage in the field. So that was, that was a big, that was a big bonus that we got that along with the boat. So that was last year's purchases. We're looking for a Unified Command vehicle now, basically the big bus that we take down to Sunfest so that we could take that out into the field. Ultimately, we would like to have that, the capability to hook that into our Real-Time Crime Center so that what's going on in the Real-Time Crime Center and everything they can see and get in our physical building, you'll be able to get out in the field also. So if you had a big event, you could tie into every resource that we have available to us, and it could be in the field as opposed to in the building. The setup here, just a dynamic incident, just kind of shows you, you have a Unified Command. Fire and EMS have their responsibilities. Law enforcement has their responsibilities, but we've got to practice, otherwise it won't work as a team. So one of the things that we've really upped over the past year, year and a half, has been the training together so that we're working together on these scenes and we know what we're supposed to do when we get to a scene. Our Calls for Service, still up. We answered 112,000 calls, almost 113,000 calls for service last year. That doesn't include just calls that come into our call center. A lot of times, we get calls that get deferred. We're usually in the neighborhood of about 200,000 calls that come into the Dispatch Center, so they're very busy. Our response time is something that's very important, especially on priority calls. Our goal or our benchmark is five minutes. We want to be less than five minutes to get to anything that's real serious. This year, we were under five minutes. We were at 4.89 minutes, which was an improvement over last year. That could have to do with the fact that our manpower's gone up a little bit, so we have a few more bodies in the field right now, but also, the information that's coming into us, we're more responsive to it, and it's coming directly to the cars. So the guys know something's happening before the Dispatch Center tells them.
The Shot Spotter has to have helped with that.
Yes, yes. So our Hiring Statistics, over the past, since the beginning of 2017, we have had, we've had 37 departures, whether they were retirements, people just going on to bigger and better things. Some of those you could predict, about, probably about 30 of those departures you could predict, those were retirements. So we had our hands full because we had vacancies when those 30 people or 37 people started leaving. So since 2017, we've hired 48 people. The breakdown of who was hired is on this slide. As you see on the right-hand side of the slide, there's internal candidates. What we ended up doing over the past two years is we've opened up hiring for city employees that work in other departments. So somebody that maybe wanted to be a police officer but didn't have the time to go out to get the training or wasn't eligible when they first started working with the city, we opened it up for them, and we would sponsor them to go into the police academy and come on as a police officer. So those were people that were not hired or were not sworn before, not certified through the police academy. In addition to that, that number represents our internship program that we created last year. We brought in people that were kind of specifically targeted, same type of situation. They didn't have the means to go to a police academy, so they never had the opportunity to become police officers. So we created a 40-hour volunteer program slash internship program. If you went through that and you decided you still wanted to be a police officer, then you were eligible for your own pool of applicants competing against each other to get a sponsorship. So that's been pretty productive. We hired, we hired eight people out of that this year. We only did two last year, and of that, we're kind of, we're able to diversify a little bit more because the candidates that are coming in sworn don't look like what we're trying to get to. So we have more people coming in that we're able to sponsor into the academy. And with that, here's Commissioner Shoff, your overall demographics, the population. According to what we've worked with the city on getting the numbers, has gone up about 10,000. So the breakdown of the overall workforce of the city is in this slide as well as the Police Department. So we have moved up a little bit. If you look at the sworn Police Department numbers for 2018, or January 2018, it says 294. We were not up to full staffing at 294, so that part's not accurate, but the numbers below it are. So if you look at the bottom right at 287, we currently have eight vacancies, but the difference in the makeup of the department is on the right-hand side as opposed to the to the left-hand side. And that, again, with 37 people leaving, we hired 48, so we only really made up 11 spots. It's very difficult to kind of change the whole dynamic of the department when you don't have a whole lot of people leaving. So, we're, we're kind of plugging holes, but at this point, we're starting to move forward, because we have less vacancies than we have in probably 10 years. And that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Awesome. Great job. Thank you, Chief. Questions for Chief Mooney. Tricia Shof.
Thank you, and thank you, Chief. When it comes to technology, I think that was one of the really big wins. What's next for you in technology? Where do you need support? Is there other technology to help you with burglaries, à la bait cars, or something else that's coming down the line that you, you see for the future?
The, the biggest is going to be the expansion of what we already have, because we've only got it in, in certain sections of the city. The cameras is going to be huge, and then the license plate readers is huge, because it's, it's things that are, that can help us be proactive without sitting and waiting for something to happen. Bait cars, yes, we have a couple of those, and, or we did, and they're in different levels of disrepair. So, we're always trying to fix those up and get them back out in the field. Those are helpful, but being able to see and, and, and be able to analyze things that are moving, à la the license plate readers, those are probably our two biggest bang-for-all buck on things. The ShotSpotter system has been very good. It's pretty expensive, and it's actually doing what they said it would do. It's, it's giving us more information than we ever would have had, because we are getting, we are getting a report every time those guns are, a gun is, is fired, as opposed to when somebody decides to call it in. So, initially, they had said that there could be up to 80% of the gunfire that goes off, whether it's one shot, or, or 20 shots, that we miss it. So, our numbers right now, we're, we're comparing scenes that we go to where we get a call, and scenes that we go to that we don't get a call. In about 80% of the scenes we go to, we do not get a call. So, it's, it, that's, it's a necessary piece of equipment right now, until we can, can get the community back into paying attention. I, I think that it's a matter of they just kind of hear something, and that's normal, and it shouldn't be normal. So, we want to try to recreate that normal, so the new normal is you do call if you hear something.
All right, thank you. Other questions for Chief? Well, thank you, and thank you all for all the great work that you do, and the respect that you have in the community is just, it's been great. So, thank you. Okay, welcome, Commissioner Lambert. We're going to go to number one, South Dixie update.
Wending, City Traffic Engineer. There, there's a couple of things that we're working in reference to South Dixie Highway. About two years ago, we were asked to take a look at parking in this area, and at the same time, we were working on the lane elimination project that essentially will create more availability within the South Dixie corridor, to create more parking, to revitalize the businesses. So, I'm going to give us a little update on where we're at with our progress for both studies, because they do overlap. You know, when we were working on the downtown parking study, we did take a look at the inventory for PBAU in that general area, and what we found is on-street capacity is, there's a lot of, there's not enough capacity. One reason we found is because there's no structure, there's no limitation on when someone can park, so essentially, you know, people park there all day, especially if you're a student or you're a construction worker. So, we wanted to expand that parking study a little further, and take a look at the entire South Dixie corridor, all the way down to Belvedere. And this is a request of the adjacent resident that works through the very popular restaurants, like such as Table 26, in that area. But not only we looked at inventory along that corridor, we went ahead and expanded to Flamingo Park and Grandview Heights, and we saw that there are quite a bit of capacity. So, when we were doing the study, we spent a few nights counting cars, and that was really interesting, because we count vehicles on-street and off-street in the busiest night, which is, which is Friday night during season, and it, the count was at 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock. So, essentially, we know those are the peak higher demand. And in the key finding table, here, we separate those zones into three separate zones, and I can go into further details. But what we saw is that the busiest zone is Zone 2, as predicted, adjacent to the very popular restaurants area, at 57% occupied on-street.
Wait a minute, go back a minute. So, you're saying that 57% of the parking spaces were occupied?
7, 57% of the on-street availability within those areas is occupied with vehicles. So, there are, what we're trying to say is there are availability.
So, there's 43% of the, are available?
Right.
I, I'm shocked.
I think we can go into further details about, one is perception, and where it really is personal with the, the adjacent property owners. So, you know, simply, we separate Zone 1 as it is PBAU and the Norton area, and we found that, you know, very high demand during school hours. We found that PBAU parking policies are, they're working through it, they're working to update it, but essentially, their parking pass is something like $100 for the entire year. So, when students are, does not have enough time to park in the garage, they typically park on, on-street. We also note during this time that there's construction at the Bristol, so a lot of construction workers were parking on-street also, because there's, as you can see, there's no duration, there's no limitation. So, with free parking and available parking 24/7, we see a lot of that. Then we saw that the, the Norton across the street during this time was under construction, so it was closed during construction, therefore, it has a little bit to offset that demand in that area. So, when we look at each one of these zones, we want to make the right recommendation in this area, and what we think we can do better is coordinate with PBAU and help mitigate and create some really, you know, create some kind of incentivized system, so that the students who either, who lives half, less than half a mile away, would actually walk and bike to the school instead of driving. And also, we want to, to put limitation on how often, or you have to turn it around. For example, if you have morning hours, you're in there, you're parking, you know, for a class, you might need to move your car afterwards. So, the, the biggest recommendation that comes out of this zone is to put two-hours and four-hours limitation on-street. So, as we moved into Zone 2, which is our busiest, and we walked the street, we met with many neighbors, and we interviewed all the businesses in this area, and we wanted to understand more why the, the perception of parking, because we're looking at our data, it's only 57% utilized. Why is it so frustrating for, you know, the adjacent residents there? One other thing that we found is there's no dedicated space for employee parking. So, essentially, if you are working as a waiter, or you're a service industry, you tend to park on-street where you can find it, and that is right in front of someone's house. And even though it's city's parking spaces, and it's available for everybody, it's very personal for those who live there. We also saw that some of the homes at the area has apartments in the, in the rear, so they are a little over capacity from that aspect. But what we, what we found is there are quite a bit of shared parking opportunities in this area, and we've identified all those parking opportunities, and we want to help facilitate conversations among business owners, to help them get their employees, like create a district, and help their employees get into these, you know, safe space. Because one of the other concern is, if you're a service industry employee, and you're walking with a lot of tips in your pockets after hours, it might not be the best for you to randomly park in, in front of someone's house. So, these are the areas we identified, as you can see on the map, that we potentially have 81 spaces that we can, you know, we can help redistribute. The other thing that we observe, it's very interesting, is, you know, when you come out there at night, and you, you're watching how people interact with each other, is that we saw valet operating services on city streets, so they were valeting on city streets. And, you know, the part of the, what we're working with the downtown parking and the ordinance update is creating a regulate, regulations for people to operate on city streets, but we have to create safe spaces for them to operate. And again, you know, when we do the South Parking, South Dixie, we, we recommend that you meter that area during that specific time. One is to create availability and turnover for the adjacent businesses along this area. Then the last area, or the last zone in the study is, it really is more commercial and residential, there's not a lot of business, restaurants, so it, it's quite simple, actually. This area is the least of our worry, as far as management. I think we, later in this presentation, we have a plan to increase that availability and create more order for residential parking along this area. So, to update you with the South Dixie Lane Elimination, since I, I believe I worked on this project for over three years up to this point, and I know we finally got approval from FDOT to do this project, but this project initiated or originated from the businesses adjacent to the corridor, and they actually paid for the study. The city took it over and really worked with FDOT to get this final recommendations. So, the original study is from Okeechobee along South Dixie, all the way to Albemarle. And the lane repurposing, or lane diet, as we call it, is to take a four-lane section and to create a three-lane section with on-street parking and landscape and irrigation. The, you know, one of the things that we have to take into consideration is, when we work on DOT roadway, we have to follow their guidance and engineering standards. So, we know that we can increase parking spaces by 43 along this corridor. It may not seem like it's a lot, but it's the safest space that we can fit into the area, without obstructing site triangle, because this is ultimately a safety study. As you can see, we've been coordinating with DOT very periodically. There are two things that they would not do for us. They would not do landscaping irrigation, and they, and that is a Department of Transportation policy. So, we're working with them on doing our exhibits and creating, we know that for a successful lane elimination, we need landscaping. So, we're working with them, this is DOT's schedule. They are working on getting some kind of preliminary design back to us, engineering design, and we're hoping to go back to the neighborhood as we have more finalized recommendations.
So, I, I can't help but wonder why it takes a year and a half to get to 100% plants?
This is DOT's process, I can't.
I understand that, I know it's not ours, but.
Yeah, they're, well, this project, they're designing in-house, so it's actually DOT staff that's going to be doing the engineering. There are a lot of hoops that they have to go through, they have the NEPA process, that they have to do all the environmental assessments, you know, but I think that my answer would be, it's DOT, it takes a little longer than how we do business.
That's a good answer, thank you.
So, lastly, what we, when we looked at this area, is we know that a lot of streets are very tight, we know that there are a lot of homes on this, within this area. So, what we wanted to do is create a system of one-way streets within Mango Promenade, and create order parking spaces and stripe-out parking spaces in this area. So, we're working on the final design. As you can see, our schedule is very quick compared to DOT's, but it really is a signing and striping plan for us. We're looking to, for example, if you have a one-way street, you can create more on-street parking spaces, because you can have parking on both sides. Also, we're working with Public Works and their sanitation department, and part of the one-way routing is to help the garbage pickup, to be more efficient with the garbage pickup. So, next month, we, we do have an ordinance to, to come in, because we have, right now, we have an ordinance for one-way streets, and we're looking to clean up some of those ordinance language, and create, again, more availability and a more system in this area. So, we're hoping by summertime, we will have more on-street parking on the adjacent blocks to the, the most busy area, which is our Zone 2.
How much push, pushback are we going to get about the one-way street?
Actually, we've been working with the neighborhood, we've been out there on several neighborhood meetings last week. We workshop block by block, and yes, we have concurrence with each one of the block that they, they support this.
Super.
Yep. So, lastly, this is, you know, we, we do have to communicate with the, the public, and these are some potential discussion points that we've put together, is we need to get the merchant to organize, and what we heard, the original request was, there's not enough parking spaces on there. And we went out, and we count, and we know that the highest utilization is only 57%, so it's perception. And I think it has a lot to do with how do we create order in our system as a whole to create more efficiency. So, these are some of the things that we want to talk about. One of the big things is we need to discuss, how do we tackle employee parking? Because I think that is the most frustrating part for residents in this area. So, this is our updates, where we're at with the projects, the two projects, so.
So, what's a parking management district? What does that mean?
It's essentially taking a look at the entire zone, and creating a district, and creating a set of rules for that district.
Thank you. Questions for one? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much for the presentation, that was great. I, I'm glad you have it on this slide, that was my question, was, so where are, maybe you can point out, because I see there's a lot of different colors and spots there, squares on there, where are all the spots that aren't being utilized?
There are, for example, there are spots right between this area, or in Canouga, or really, it's on the west side of the track that's not utilized, because over here on Valette, where we have a lot of requests, those are residence, residential parking spaces.
If I could follow up. So, I've actually parked on the west side of Dixie and crossed over to, to go to a restaurant over there, and almost took my life, I guess I did take my life in my own hands crossing the street there. So, are we, I, I know that there's one crosswalk that I saw that was put in with lights, and, a little bit south of this area, I believe, but do we have more plans for that, or is that part of the other project?
Yeah, it's, it's part of DOT. I think, right now, you have to cross four lanes of traffic, and essentially, when we do the lane elimination, it'll go down to three lanes.
And will there be pedestrian crosses, crossings added?
Yeah, we're working to get appropriate pedestrian crossing, very limited every two blocks or so.
It is, yeah.
And of course, the last thing is lighting in this area, we need to enhance lighting. We got DOT to agree to redesign lighting, so it brings up to a higher level of standards for safety, so you don't have to take your life in your own hands.
Thank you. Yeah, that was, they were driving really fast, so.
Tricia Shof?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. Question about the parking within the neighborhoods, understanding these are city streets, and anyone can park anywhere, I think the concerns I've heard from the neighbors are, you have patrons coming in that are going to businesses for two, three hours at a time, where I come home with my groceries, and it would be more convenient for me to park outside my house, so I could get in and, and get out more conveniently to where I live. So, is there a way, when we're coming up with our regulations, that we can try to steer parking to a specific area adjacent to businesses? So, you know, some of the things I've seen is near the CrossFit gym, you know, CrossFit is across the railroad tracks, up parking completely down the street, and kind of crowding neighbors outside their homes. If we can have some designated areas that, that help merchants get their employees to park in a specific area, whether it's incentivizing to park further away and, and come back, because I'm imagining some of the 43% are available, just not available convenient to where some, some people want to go.
In front of their house.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's where we, we want to initiate these conversations, because we know that the merchant, especially the Pauls, the very important Pauls, he's very organized, and he's, he's really taken it on himself as, to have leadership in this area, to, to mandate where his staff is parking. We just want to have that same conversation, identify a location, have the conversation with all the businesses, and see if we can create.
Well, I think the shared parking opportunities are, if we can make that work, that would help incredibly, I think. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, and I had, just had one question about South Dixie and the DOT project. Do you know, is there a prescribed community engagement method from DOT? Because I know residents are really eager to give input into their experiences here, and knowing that it's a bit out of the control of the city, if there's a way that they can be advised to engage with DOT?
So, having experience with DOT and worked on DOT projects, the, they will have 60% plants, and they will have one public meeting. The best recommendation I would give, all the commissioner, is please have the resident- The best recommendation I would give all the commissioner is, please have the residents contact our office, and so we will push that agenda. We offer to have a stakeholder meeting, so we're just engineering staff and DOT, to see how we can engage more of those conversations, how we can help address some of those more personal requests. But ultimately, when they sent us a set of very technical engineering plans, I believe that we can help translate some of those requests into the comments back to DOT. So I would recommend that they contact me.
Thank you. I just have a question about that. So, yeah, we have been getting a lot of questions on where are we with this, so I appreciate this presentation today. So that would be my question, is when we get requests or concerns or questions, do you want them to be directed to you? Do you want us to direct them to watching this video? Is there going to be any outreach that we're doing specifically?
I would recommend that, since we have a lot of interest in this project, in June 2019, if we are on schedule, so summer of 2019, we have 30%, and this is the opportunity for us to go back and workshop with the neighborhood and engineering with staff.
So you guys will take the FDOT plans and bring them to the neighborhood and talk with them about it?
And they're very technical plans, so you might need to, you know, dissect it. But I think what's personal is like, where are the loading zones for the businesses? Where are some of the trees, opportunities? How we create more shades? Those are the conversations that we typically get.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Lynn. Good job.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have one other question. Is south of Southern, are there plans for...
No, we're doing Broadway next, so forget South of Southern.
There's like sequences that, because, you know, DOT, we don't want to overwhelm them with requests. So Broadway is our efforts right now, and we follow the TPA, the Palm Beach TPA recommendation, and the next section is from Quadrille all the way to Northwood. So we're analyzing, we just got a contract to analyze traffic, because what we want to do is we want to see if there's any fatal fall, if we would pursue it even further. So I'll be more happy to share with you the traffic numbers when we have that ready. But ultimately, we have to, you know, know that which one's an easy win for us, so we...
I can appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next one is Sunset Lounge update. Commissioner Neary, did you want to tee it up?
Thank you, Mayor. I think there are many moving pieces to this, right? There is the actual construction. There was some conversation around what the operations would look like. That is inclusive of the potential nonprofit and their piece in the sunset, and so this has been obviously years and years in the making. So I was just curious where we were on some of those, knowing that we are not at the finish line.
Mr. Ward?
Mayor Commissioners, good morning. I'm John Ward. I'm your CRA director. Obviously, this is a project that's near and dear to our heart for any number of reasons, and with me today, I've got some of the staff that's involved most intimately with this project. On the right, Arturo Quintero. Arturo's our construction administrator. We're in the midst of talking about pricing and everything else right now, how do we build things. That construction piece that you mentioned, of course, Allison Justice, our senior project manager, and next door, Gina Baker. Gina is the project manager for the Northwest and has been the most painfully engaged in this ongoing project from a time standpoint. And then Daryl Bays next to her. Daryl is our operations manager for the Sunset. And there's an old joke that I always like to refer to about a dog chasing a car, and of course, the punchline is always, what does he do when he catches it? So we're trying to look ahead at the end of the construction period. We are going to catch an operating project that is going to be ongoing for a much longer period of time than it's going to take us to build it. So we're trying to get ahead of that, and we'll talk about that a little bit this morning. So to get everybody up to speed, let's look at the Sunset. The other thing that's important for you and the public to understand is that the work that we're doing at the Sunset is not something that stands on its own. We're addressing conditions, jobs, poverty, housing, all sorts of issues in the historic northwestern part of town. And a lot of the things that we're doing, although we have to do them as individual projects, they all relate to the other things that we are doing there. So we're looking at this as a much more coordinated effort than you might think. So you can see on the slide, the northernmost square is the Sunset itself, and you can see the Sunset, and there was a little apartment building next door to it, which we demolished months ago. But we also own the rest of that block. And when you see the development plans for the Sunset, our parking lot, our primary parking lot and delivery and that sort of thing, will take up that northern part of that. So the Sunset will occupy that entire block. And then south of it, we've also, as an element of this process, we've engaged in a very significant amount of civic engagement with the community. And we have a philosophy in that we're not interested in doing things for the community, we're interested in doing things with the community. And in doing that, that means that we have to reach out and engage them on an ongoing basis, even to the point now where we have regular quarterly meetings with the community, whether we have anything to talk about in particular or not, just making ourselves available. Here's an update. What are your questions? Kind of a thing. So below that, obviously, one of the things that came out of this conversation was the need for a park or public spaces in the community. They don't have a large, open, public space for kids to go and to congregate and to have events on the outside. So we planned as part of this development, a part of the Sunset development, the Heart and Soul Park below that. And then adjacent to that, this large square where you can see some of, these are smaller shotgun-style houses, that's the location for Sticks Alley. And I'll show you some overview of what that is now. But Sticks Alley is where we're building capacity for entrepreneurs and business opportunities in the neighborhood. Everybody asks us, well, what new businesses have opened in the neighborhood? And one of the reasons that new businesses are not opening in the neighborhood is that the traditional business haunts, what they used to call the stroll, always on, in this instance, on Rosemary and Tamarind, there are no buildings on Rosemary and Tamarind that are ready to put businesses in. So there's no place to house them. So what we're going to do here in particular and in other areas is create some opportunities for entrepreneurs to actually own potentially their own businesses and certainly be housed. One of the observations that we've noted in working with folks is, West Palm Beach seems to have a tremendous amount of what are referred to as trap kitchens. People that cook in their own homes and people go by to buy meals there. There are folks that I am aware of that cook Saturdays and Sundays and serve dinners and things out of those locations. People drive by and they get them. There are people that are some of the best cooks that you can imagine, but they're all operating in these kind of ad hoc fashions, and we're looking for ways to bring them into real bricks-and-mortar settings where they can actually make a living doing that. And the last thing I want to point out is the little red square here, which is only partially showing, that's the vacant area that's north of the community center there, the Salvation Army Community Center. You may or may not be aware that when the community center was developed, the city leased that property to the Salvation Army on a 99-year lease. And of course, then the CRA gave them a million-dollar grant to build the building. And the original plans, when they submitted them, they had indicated that they were going to do some ball fields and things in the northern property, and that's vacant now. The ball fields were never built, don't seem to be any appetite for that development, and in fact, I think about two years ago, they came to us with an affordable housing project that they wanted to propose there, and for a variety of reasons, that didn't go anywhere. But the bottom line is, it appears to us that they are not of a mind to use that space. So we've been having these conversations with you for about two and a half or three years now about the Manchester Bidwell NCAT program, National Center for Arts and Technology. And one of our agreements with the Manchester Bidwell folks is, at the conclusion of the evaluation, which we've already had, we have to sign up, if we move forward with this thing, to build them at least a 10,000-square-foot building to house the program, and it has to have certain kinds of elements to the building and that sort of thing. It's our idea that we'll build something a little nicer than that. That will be arguably the largest, most significant job creation program that this city has ever engaged in, and it will be ongoing. The great thing about the NCAT program is that they have, right now, in the eight or nine cities that they've already rolled this program out to, they have over an 80% job placement rate. So it's not a matter of coming out of a program with a certificate saying, gee whiz, I'd like to get a job somewhere. They come out from programs directly designed to move right into employment from some of our partner-sponsored businesses, and we've gotten great responses from the community. So the idea that I'm going to present to you when we get around to talking about this project is that I'd like to suggest that that site may be a very good site to house the NCAT program. It's in the right part of the city where the need is the greatest. It's in an area that's adjacent to transportation. People can walk there. I think it's a great location for us. And currently, for your information, I'm in negotiations with the Salvation Army to see if we can recover that property and amend the lease that we have with them for them to surrender that property there. I've had one talk with their state land person. He asked me if I had a site plan to show his board, so they'd have a better idea of what they were talking about. So we've engaged one of our pool architect designers. Right now, I'm going to spend the most minimum amount of money to show them an outline of about, here's the kind of footprint it would take, and see if we can't move the ball on that. If they're not willing to give the land up, then obviously, we're going to have to go somewhere else and think about something else. But I'd like to suggest to you that I think that's a pretty good location for it, and I hope I get support on that. So anyway, I want to show you all this, because when I talk about the Sunset, I'm talking about rebuilding the entire northwest, the historic northwest. I'm not just talking about that one building, although the one building's what we're focused on today, but it's all of these things and how they relate to each other and how they support each other and how they make this, in every sense of the word, a true destination for our city, from a food standpoint, from a job standpoint, and everything else. So I know that's a lot of time to talk about one slide, but it's important that you understand how they relate. For history, everybody knows how the Sunset started out, probably 1926, garage downstairs and a wonderful roof garden up above. And of course, by the end of the '30s or the early '40s, it got to the point where it is more or less in today's form. During the development of this, we have an idea that there was not an architectural style developed when they started this. They didn't have a drawing saying, this is what we want it to look like. We have an idea that as parts and pieces of buildings were demolished or things like that, they acquired little things and they just built them into the building. You could see from the earlier picture that they'd already anticipated that this was going to be a two-story building, so we've got the framework for it, but the windows and the infill there on the side, some are square, some are round top, they obviously came from somewhere else. That wasn't something that was developed for the site, but it's left us with an interesting combination of styles in the building. And of course, we all know that every act that we've ever heard of, and a lot that you never heard of, have had appeared there. This is Lionel Hampton. He's a vibe player, and that's him standing behind his vibes at the Sunset, and we have lots and lots of other material that show famous acts, famous historical jazz and blues acts, all the way from this group, all the way up to, I guess, James Brown appeared there in the '70s and that kind of thing, but every act that you ever heard of was there, and this is the Sunset today. So how do we get from this to this? This is the Sunset 2.0. The existing building, which we're in the process of restoring, is about a 14,000-square-foot building. And as it presently resides, or as it was residing before we closed it for business, there was a lounge, of course, downstairs, and that was it. First floor was a big bar. Those of you that have been in there have seen it. Upstairs, in the old days, it was built as a ballroom. It was the largest, they called it the largest fireproof ballroom in the South. At some point in the late '30s or mid-'40s, there were buildings on that entire block, and they all burned down, except for the Sunset. So that's been a survivor for a long time. But the ballroom was upstairs. Two-story space, mezzanine around the edge, that great domed roof. But sometime after the big band era stopped being popular, they converted it to a series of apartments for, I think, one of the social groups. So anyway, we're going back to restoring it to the ballroom that it was. Downstairs, the goal here is to create not only the lounge that is there historically, but also to create a restaurant inside, so a full food and beverage operation. And then, of course, we've got in addition to that, an additional 7,000 square feet in the additional wing that's proposed. And you can see how it lays out. The bar in the front, where it's always been, restaurant in the back, and then in the new wing here, that's where we'll put bathrooms that are, anyone that's been to the bathrooms over there knows that they were built inadequately from day one, so you've got to redo those things, bring them modern and large enough to house public gatherings. There's a kitchen in here. There are pre-function spaces in the same fashion that when you go to meetings at the convention center, you know, we all stand around outside in the hallways and have coffee, and then you go into the meeting room. This will function in much that same fashion with those pre-function kinds of things, and it will also give the ability for the community who doesn't, everybody in the community that we are trying to attract to this and in the city don't necessarily want to have to go to a bar. So historically, the only way you could get into this building was to come in this door into the ball, into a bar. If you're a church person, or if you're a person that doesn't drink, or all that sort of thing, we're going to design this in a fashion to give you the opportunity to come in here and into what is a beautiful entrance to a restaurant. It's just like going into any other great restaurant where you have someone to help seat you and all that sort of thing. If you want to have a drink with your meal, you certainly can. We'll have a fabulous facility for that, but if you don't, you don't have to. So it'll be great for families, et cetera. Upstairs, the ballroom, this is the first floor of the ballroom, and again, as I said, that large pre-function space, again, more bathrooms. The other thing that we had to create here in this, in the building, was elevators. Obviously, ADA, it was not ever built to be ADA compliant. You had to go up a very narrow set of stairs from the first floor, so we'll have several elevators here to function as getting people, of course, and food and beverage and all sorts of equipment to the upper floors from here. Right now, today, if you went over there, this is what you'd find on the second floor. And you can see the difference in the color tones between the, it's green below where the mezzanine was, and of course, then it's lighter above there. We have torn out all of the interior construction apartments and things. This has a stair area in it that's been removed since the pictures, but this is what we're doing, is we have completed, it's phase one of the construction already. We've done selective demolition work to tear out everything and get it ready to come back and be reconstructed. And we thought this was interesting. Obviously, you can't dance in a balcony. We're going to try and save all of these kinds of elements from the historic building that we can to reference that. And I've got staff, Dr. Alicia Nguyen in particular, is looking at, we found a treasure trove of paper documents and some other things that were stored in a back room in the Sunset. So as we were cleaning all this material out, we've saved it and preserved it for exhibit space, for interaction with the various historic groups, and also to help us design the piece going forward. So today, to update you, obviously, we have retained, and you've met them before, the construction manager at risk, Cooper Construction. Cooper's job was to conduct the selective demolition, which we've already done. It was phase one. What was the price point? 600? I think we spent the better part of $600,000 on selective demolition already. Part of the work that we're also doing is the roof, the big barrel roof, was leaking like a sieve, had a lot of rot in it. We've been going through that and replacing a number of those elements. The roof deck is virtually complete. We're probably 80% complete with that now, so we'll have a new roof on it. So when we start doing the work on the interior... have a new roof on it. So when we start doing the work on the interior, we won't be damaged, obviously, by rain and that sort of thing. The CMAR develops for us, one of his tasks is develop a guaranteed maximum price. This is a different method of delivery than just going and bidding the job out and seeing where the bids come in. We have the comfort, I guess, in knowing that the number that we have from him is the guaranteed maximum price. What that means, of course, is that folks that give you guaranteed maximum prices make sure that they're not going to come up short. So that probably means that the number that we have is going to be higher than it may have been had we only bid the job out. So we'll see where that goes. But this guaranteed maximum price is the number that they have furnished to us that they're willing to stand behind. The initial guaranteed maximum price that we got from them, a little over, something over a month ago, was $10.8 million to do all of the restoration work, rebuilding, and to build the new structure. I will tell you that the $10.8 million number is about 25 or 30% higher than any number I had imagined that the building was going to come in. I can tell you also that all of the projects that we are doing are coming in similarly over budget. The road projects, big projects, little projects, you name it, we're getting murdered in pricing. I will say that some of that, I think, has to do with the fact that it is a guaranteed maximum price. I think there may be 10% in there that's nothing more than that. But that's the number that he's given us. Right now, I can tell you that, as it says, the initial price was rejected by staff. I told him that there is no way we're moving forward with that kind of number. And what's happening right now with Arturo in particular is that we are going through, doing a line-by-line analysis, and this is dozens of pages, but a line-by-line analysis of all of the bids, seeing where the numbers are, where we can tighten them up, where we can engineer the project better and reduce the prices. The goal being that we'd like to come out of this, say, seven and a half, $8 million. I think it'll be an $8 million number by the time we're through with it, if we're successful in that. As I said, the GMP's underlined review, we're meeting with the architect tomorrow. We're at the finger-pointing stage where it's everybody else's fault. You know, it's one of those things. Well, it's this expensive because of this. It's this expensive because plumbers are fully employed, known and owned forever. But at the end of the day, we're having fairly, how shall I say, energetic conversations about this. The construction is anticipated. If we can get to a number that is an acceptable number after value engineering this, I'm assuming we can probably start construction on phase two sometime June, July of this year. It's going to take us 12 to 15 months to build it. If we can get moving, we'll be complete in the fourth quarter at this point of 2020. And from an operations standpoint, knowing that we're a year away from that, I've retained Darrell Bay as an operations manager to look forward to, how do we open the place? How do we program the place? How do we develop a board? How do we start getting set up with a development board to fund the endowment? We're interviewing potential food and beverage operators. I sent everybody a copy of, I think, a CV on Alexander Smalls, who is a number of restaurants, high-profile. He's got a bunch of books out. He's been on TV. He's a real personable guy and a good face for this kind of operations. But we're also looking at all of the high-profile chefs that would be appropriate for this kind of project. And in having conversations with them, the operational method seems to be that we will make a deal with someone that has one of these high profiles. And obviously, we want that name attached to the project because it's going to draw traffic. This is an economic development decision. They will develop the menu. They'll talk to you about the styling of the restaurant and all this kind of thing. And then you'll have to retain, we'll have to retain, a local restaurant operator that'll physically do the day-to-day work. I will tell you that none of these Bobby Flay types, any of these high-profile cooks, are going to be in the back cooking on Tuesday. I mean, they just don't do that. They attach their name to things. That's their image. They stand behind it. But you're not going to see them on the site very often unless they come in for special events and things like that. So we'll have to have a local operator and that kind of thing. So we're looking at how we do all those kinds of things. And then during the year, as we do the construction piece, we'll also be conducting ongoing, top-of-mind events to try and keep the community engaged, involved with the sunset, and letting everybody know that it's a long process, but we're still working on it, and that's the direction we're moving in. So, and as part of that conversation, you can see we do these pop-up events. This is us doing a pop-up park to mock what the park could look like and how it could function. Again, as it relates to the sunset, here's an indication of what the park could look like with the playgrounds and that sort of thing in it. And you can see, the big green square is the park. So we're going ahead, we're thinking about that development as we're doing this at the same time. Also, Seventh Street and Rosemary Streets, these major streets, are part of the bond process that we just approved recently. We're going to propose to you that those streets, projects, are going to be part of this development. And then down below Seventh Street here, that's again, that location for Sticks Alley. Again, we're in the development piece of that. We're drawing the plans. I think, where are we with the road? 80%?
Almost 60.
60%. So we're moving in a direction to try and get the road work prepared. We'll build the roads and the alleyway first, and then we'll, of course, do the uplands development there.
John, do you know anything about the two proposed hotels on Rosemary, where they are?
Step up to the table.
Gina Baker, project manager.
Use the mic.
Sorry.
Use the mic.
Gina Baker, project manager, Historic Northwest. I think it's on. Can you hear me? Yes. Thank you, sir. I had the pleasure of speaking with a developer this morning, Indigo, which is part of the development. Actually, there are three parts to that development. Affordable Housing Project, Aloft Hotels, and then the Indigo product. The developer has indicated that they're moving forward with Indigo. You'll probably be seeing some fencing coming up shortly. They're through the site plan and development stages, and they are working with the building department to get, they're in a pre-construction phase with the building department. I just spoke with them this morning. So that's quite exciting.
Can I give you a date?
Great, thank you.
They are anticipating Indigo to come out of the ground in September of this year.
So 12 months to build it, end of next year, looks like.
Super, thank you.
The last thing I want to talk about this morning, this is, show you the concept for Sticks Alley. Sticks Alley is, as you can see on the left-hand side here, a pair of shotgun-shaped kinds of houses, that long four-and-a-half kind of a thing. And our thought process on this was that you could pair like-minded uses for this sort of a development. You can see in that first drawing there that the units that are facing Seventh Street are going to be reconstructed in the same fashion that the shotguns were there historically, to keep that historic perspective in the neighborhood, that scale, sort of a thing. But we also know that, looking forward, a lot of our young entrepreneurs are not that excited with historic restoration, preservation. They don't collect antiques, that sort of thing. They're just into new things. So the architect has taken an interesting path, and he's taken the same kind of footprint here, in that same essential shape. But you can see that it's a contemporary version of a shotgun house. So we'll put them together as a pair with the classic matched with the very contemporary sort of thing. And the idea here, thinking, is that you can see that they're in pairs. They may be two businesses that related to each other. So the rear section could be a hair-cutting place, and the front one could be a shop that sold clothing. Or if that were a restaurant, the rear section could be the bar, kitchen, and the front section where you ate, and then you could eat on the outsides and things like that. Or those sorts of things, interesting related things. We've also designed them so they fit on a single building lot. So at some point in the future, if we can get these businesses up and running, and they are sustainable on their own, and their credit gets developed, we're going to find a way to develop a program to let them own these buildings so that the neighborhood, in fact, owns the buildings themselves, the businesses owns them, and they can move forward. That's the long-term vision. But I want to assure you that our goal here is not to own a lot of buildings as an agency. We want the community to benefit and benefit by the economic development by actually having the ability to own assets in that community. So it's not a government program always. It's a transitional economic development piece for us. And that's the kind of examples of things that I was talking about. The last thing, as I've already mentioned, is the development of the NCAT, NCAT program, acquire the land, and that. I'll be bringing sometime in the next two months to you the memorandum of understanding with the organization. If you support the bond funding and the terms of the MOU, then we'll get started on that project as well. And that's what I have.
Great, thank you, John. Questions? No questions? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job.
Thank you.
And then we have an update on railroad crossing safety. Commissioner Lambert, do you want to tee this up?
Sure, I'll just start with a little story. I was on Antique Row last week, and I ran into a future resident who was looking to move here, and they were just, you know, asking me, oh, where's the best spot? And one of the things they mentioned was staying in the south-end area before, but that the trains had kept them up all night. And they're like, we're not going to move to that area. And it was interesting because we were there right as a train was going by. And I told them about the quiet zones, and they were super excited about that. And so just wanted to say, we're so grateful for the quiet zones. I know many residents, whether it's their businesses or their own homes, that have benefited from this. So thank you. But I understand that we've had some safety measures in place that were semi-permanent or semi-temporary, I don't know which way, and that they haven't necessarily endured, whether it's cars running over them or people picking them off, and that maybe we have some plans in for some more permanent opportunities. So I'd love to just hear more about that. Thank you.
Yep. To take us back just a little bit, we were all under the impression when we got the federal dollars and it went through the TPA, that we thought all the intersections would be improved along the FEC corridor in order to be able to create a quiet zone. Well, we learned that wasn't necessarily true because in order to qualify for a quiet zone, it only had to be the average condition of the corridor. So 15 crossings on the south end got left behind with no improvements. It's a safety concern of ours from a standpoint that when you create a quiet zone, that we need to make sure that people are not crossing the tracks, trying to beat trains. You know, so it was a big concern of ours. We had to react quickly. So we went out, and as you mentioned, it's really a temporary measure where we extended what are called delineators, which are just sticks approximately 50 feet at each direction of the crossing. And the reason that we do that is, as cars pull up, you know, if you don't have that, they go right around the gate and try to beat the trains. So if you have these delineators, it at least slows them down. Some of them just ride over the delineators. They're crazy. But it prevents them from going around the gates. And so that was the theory of it, and it's quite effective as a temporary measure. Unfortunately, you know, we had to get those down quickly. We used a methodology of using epoxy to basically glue them down to the pavement. It's not been the most effective way. So we're changing that methodology. We're going to actually screw them down, you know, put anchor bolts in and screw them down, which will be a little more permanent. I think we're going to be stuck with this for a while. At the time when this first started, I thought, hey, look, there'll be another grant opportunity, and we'll get, with all the rest of the cities like Boynton and Delray and everyone, and we'll have another second round of grants to where we can get federal dollars to improve these intersections like the other ones, and that we wouldn't need this. But this isn't going to happen anytime soon. So we're resigned to keep this safety measure in place. We're going out and replacing them. We have enough in stock, and we're going to keep enough in stock in order to be able to do that. And it's a fact of life. We're just going to have to go out every couple of weeks, inspect, and then replace them. So they're out there now, replacing them today, and we should catch up. But then we're going to have to be going out on a regular basis because people are going to run over them. So that's where we're at.
Thank you. Questions for Scott? Go ahead.
Thank you. So the screwing, we haven't been screwing them down?
No, we've been using epoxy method as was recommended. It's quicker and easier. So it's basically epoxy them to the pavement.
Because what I've seen is that the black square is still there, but the tall delineer is what's missing.
Well, in that case, then, that wouldn't have helped, as far as screwing them down.
Right.
But we have had some where the actual base and the post
Came up.
Came up, so.
And my other question related to that is, you mentioned maybe every couple of weeks going by and inspecting. Is that in the plans, or is it?
Yes. Yeah, it's just going to be a part of the, I mean, we're just going to need to do this because we know we're going to have to just periodically replace them.
Because mentioning that same area where CrossFit is, that Commissioner Shoff mentioned before, they're all gone there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and frankly, we didn't really plan for this because we didn't think it was going to be such a long time period. But we just
Or that people would be running over them and trying to get across when they shouldn't be trying to get across.
But we're just going to have to maintain this because I don't want to give up the safety aspect of this.
Thank you.
I think it's really important, the safety.
Mr. James, do you have a question?
Two questions. How many intersections are we talking about?
There are 15.
Are there alternative sources of funds, maybe, I don't know, through appropriations or something? Is there another bucket of money at the federal level we might be able to go after, other than trying to go through the TPA?
Don't think so. We were hopefully going to be working with the other communities because there's strength in numbers and go for federal dollars in order to be able to catch all these ones that were left behind, all these ones. Boynton especially, they were rabid about going and getting additional funding. Everybody's kind of dropped away from it. I don't think there's much opportunity for us on our own. If you, the difficulty here is a number of these have driveways that are too close to the tracks to actually put a divider, a physical divider, which is the least expensive permanent way of doing it. So they would actually require quad gates, half million dollars each. So, you know, it's expensive proposition on a permanent solution. We have a couple right now, as we're rebuilding streets in that area, we have two streets. So we'll have 13 now because we're going to fix two of them with permanent dividers, you know, like a curb, which will prevent people, hopefully, they won't go over the curb, which will take the place of these delineers.
Is there any more, like, tiger grants available?
Well, that's what we were talking about.
Yeah, because if the different communities come together, that helps when you're looking at the tiger grant.
I mean, I'll inquire again. We all talked about that at the time, because people were kind of shocked that, they thought it would be, all the intersections would, all the crossings would be done.
Sure.
And people were kind of shocked at the time. It's like, hey, it's an average condition. So when they calculated, they left a bunch of these intersections behind.
Great. Any other questions for Scott? Okay, thank you. All right, I have nothing. Is there anything? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.